Three. I'd like to call the November tenth Wakefield Planning Board meeting to order. And I just want to see, we have Matt Lowery, you're here. Bill Di Amore here, Megan Menasali is here. And I don't know, is Joanne here? I do not see Joanne. Yet. Okay. So why don't we, I will all do is I'll call up. Huh? There you go. Screen. Trying to be careful of what I share. So here's the agenda. And you can see the notice of meeting regarding the governor's orders to suspend. Our agenda tonight. First, we'll approve some meeting minutes and then we have three, four and five will concern preliminary subdivision plans for fifty, two hundred Quanapaw Parkway and some properties on North Avenue. These are the same plans that the A and R plans that we reviewed at the October thirteenth meeting, if I remember correctly. And we accept endorsed the A and R plans and accepted the preliminary subdivision plans. Tonight, we'll hear from the owners and attorneys. They'll do a short presentation and the planning board will have some comments, but it's we're not opening up to any other comments. We just want to hear what the presentation is, where it is. And then we're going to see what the next steps are. Item number six, reviews EBA's ruling on Cherry Lane variance. This is actually zero Cherry Lane off of Greenwood. And that's something that was in front of the ZBA as a variance that was overturned. So we're going to meet with Mr. Lou this evening. And then an item items not anticipated. So approval of meeting minutes, item number two. Did everybody get a chance to read the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes? Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept hearing no comments, the October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty. Meeting minutes as presented.
Have a second.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Megan. All in favor? Accepting the meeting minutes? Alright. Bill? Alright, there you go. Thank you. Item number three, preliminary subdivision plan for fifty Quanapaw Parkway.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Good, how are you? Mr. Chairman McGrail.
Thank you, I'm good, thank you. For record attorney, Brian McGrail. Representing the applicant on this, John Ogrin. Is with me tonight on this. And John will do most of the presentation. As the board knows, this is a preliminary plan submission. It's really, the preliminary plan process is really an informal procedure under Master and laws. Chapter forty one eighty one S. That allows a proposed sub divider of land to have some opening discussions with the board about their intentions of the possibilities of subdividing the land. Prior to filing a definitive subdivision plan. Which is. Which is a public hearing process. And we would like to to accomplish that with the board tonight. You know, I think as the board knows, the preliminary plan process. At the end of the day, really has no significant consequence. From the perspective that whether it's approved or denied. In the, in the statute says that the board shall either approve, deny it, or approve it with modifications or recommendations within forty five days. And for this plan and the other ones, we would like to go through that process, whether it's an approval, approval with modifications or denial, because that's what's required under the statute. And your board has forty five days from the date of the filing. To render that decision. The filing was the twenty eighth, so I think your, your deadline on this would not be until December thirteenth. That's when I calculated it. So you would have an opportunity to further address this and the other plans that you're meeting next week, or you're meeting December eighth. If you decided to, you know, the other part of this is, there's no constructive approval for a preliminary plan. So it, you know, at the end of the day, if you totally failed to render a decision, there would not be any. Legal significance of that, there'd be no consequence legally for that, because there's no constructive approval for failure to act like it would be on a definitive plan or a special permit process. So it's really, you know, somewhat of an informal proceeding between the owner of the property and the board. As far as whether you approve it, don't approve it, approval with modifications. You know, a lot has been discussed about zoning freezes. That has absolutely no impact on the zoning freeze. That, that may be afforded to this property because of the filing of the preliminary plan. That freeze is triggered by the filing of the plan, not whether the preliminary plan itself is approved, denied, or so. So the, so you know, these are really, just really for discussion purposes, because in the event we do proceed with a definitive plan, you know, we'd like the board's input. And right now, we're looking for all, you know, you know, possible opportunities for, you know, I'll address this property for now. So with that said, Mr. Chair, if I could hand it over to John Ogrin. And if he could have control of the screen, he can bring the preliminary plan up.
Please do, I'll adjust the settings, so. Mr. Ogrin, you should have sharing abilities.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
It just says the text that says John Ogrin, okay, it's up. Yep.
Okay, um, John Ogrin, Hayes Engineering. This is a property located at fifty Quanapaw Avenue Parkway. The parcel itself is about four and a half acres in area. It's located in the limited business zone. As far as location, kind of to the southwest is North Ave. To the southeast or easily is Quanapaw Parkway. There's an office building located kind of to the northeast. And then on the other side is basically the on ramp to Route one twenty eight. Geography on the property. Essentially, the property slopes down from Quanapaw Parkway towards the rear of the property. Fairly gentle, it's not very steep slope down to, there is a boarding vegetated wetland. It's kind of located. Kind of running the hand over now from that line back all the way back to Route one twenty eight. The upland area. On this lot is essentially a field that's mowed. As far as what's being proposed, proposing a roadway. This roadway is a hundred and thirty one feet long. It does end in a cul-de-sac, now that's fifty foot. It has a fifty foot radius, the roadway is a fifty foot layout. We're proposing to have twenty six feet of pavement with vertical granite curving and sidewalks on both sides. This will easily connect to Quanapaw Parkway. As water and sewer will be connecting to the sewer and the water that's out in Quanapaw Parkway. Drainage, we're proposing, as I said, it kind of slopes down, so as soon as this road will slope down to the end of the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac, we're proposing a catch basin and drainage pipe that will discharge out towards the wetland. And that's essentially it.
Thank you. Are there any issues with easements that are existing, or is it? Safe to say that the easements are, will they be, will you need any other easements? Or is what's here going to stay, just curious about the status?
Well, there, as far as what's encumbers this property, there is an easement along this property line. Essentially a grading and drainage easement. And there's actually kind of a drainage swale that runs between the two properties here. There is an easement out here, but that's actually on the abutting property.
Okay.
And that's for benefit of this.
So open it up to the planning board, anybody have any questions regarding this preliminary subdivision plan at fifty Quanapaw Parkway?
Yeah, I do. I know at one point there was an issue with. With the wetlands where the actual jurisdictional line was, because I know. At one point, some of the land was filled out there. And. It was, it was an issue with whether the, that fill had changed the actual location of the wetlands. Has that been resolved?
Yeah, I can address that. So John, can you kind of point, I think you're showing the two lines in the back, aren't you? The two disputed area, if you will? Yeah, so is that the Fletcher line, John?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you could run along that, so John is running along the dark line there, Matt. This is a, this is a good question. So that, we refer to that as the Fletcher line, the Peter Fletcher line. And then, John, if you can go back to the, the way it was delineated. So back, I think it was probably about seven or eight years ago. There, there was a filing with the Conservation Commission for determination of, of the wetlands location. And there was a big to do about it, it ended up in litigation at DEP. The engineers at the time on the property, I believe it was, it was actually Hayes Engineering. Their position was that it was the line far back, right, John? Could you kind of go back to that line and highlight it again? That was their position. And the Conservation Commission at the time did not agree. So the Conservation Commission, they, they put the line further. It was at the end of the day, it was appealed to DEP. And DEP agreed, agreed with the Hayes Engineering line. They did not agree with the Peter Fletcher line. So what, what happened was, there was a settlement agreement signed between the Conservation Commission and the owner of the property. Putting it back, was it the Hayes line at that point, John? Or was it a compromise line? I think it was actually the Hayes line, right?
No, it was, it was what we're calling the Hayes line.
It was a Hayes line, yeah. So the, the, the Conservation Commission agreed to it with a number of contingencies. That delineation that was done and the agreement with the Conservation Commission expired. Because it was only good for three years. And that's how long they're good for. So basically, it's of no consequence anymore. So recently, the owner filed to do a redelineation of the line. And we had a number of hearings with the Conservation Commission on this. And the Conservation Commission hired Peter Fletcher again. The owner, the, the owner of the property paid for that. And Peter went out and said, gee, I think my line's right again. So you know, we're kind of back at square one, if you will. So what we agreed to do is, if and when this lot is developed, what, what we've agreed to do with the Conservation Commission, we withdrew our delineation request now. And we said to them, we're going to try to hold the Fletcher line for you. We're going to try to, we're going to try to accept the Fletcher line if this lot is developed. And so, you know, we really don't want to fight over the line, because we're going to, we're going to look at this and try to, try to acquiesce to that line. And if we can, we'll do that. If not, you know, we'll come back and we'll revisit it and it will probably be a big appeal process. But you know, the owner of the property said, you know, I'd rather not fight over that line if, if, if it doesn't matter. And part of what was said to the Conservation Commission was, on top of that, there will be a lot of mediation that will be done in the wetland area to make the wetland better. So does that explain it?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically an unresolved issue.
Yeah, it's an unresolved issue back there, but the owner of the property is trying to respect what the Conservation Commission's position is, the line is.
Okay.
Don't necessarily agree with it, but we're trying to respect it and live with it.
Okay. One other question. Will you be proposing some water quality control for the drainage outfall? Well, I see you're just dumping it into the wetlands right now. Are you gonna, is it going to be any? Cleaning the water as it exits the roadway?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we would be required to do something. Obviously, we haven't taken into that level of design yet. But there would need to be some sort of water quality. At a minimum, you know, whether it's some sort of a swell or. Probably would be something in the line of a water quality swell.
Okay. And. What types of potential buildings would, would one expect would be able to be built on what you're proposing here?
Don't know at this point. There's been nothing proposed.
Well, you, you must have done some calculations to make sure, you know, some type of building can fit on here, correct?
Well, you know, the owner of the property has looked at that. I've had no discussions with them on that or their architect or anybody, so you know, I honestly don't, honestly don't know. At this point. They're obviously contemplating doing something on it, but what that would be and where it would be. Don't know the detail on that, there is none.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have for now.
Bill or Megan, any comments? Questions?
Matt addressed my, my question, which was in regards to the discharge out into the wetland. So that's been addressed, so thank you.
Bill, you all set? Okay. Are we, um. Attorney McGrail, what's, how would you like to proceed with fifty Quanapaw Parkway? Do we, are you planning to move forward with this preliminary plan as is for us as a board to? Review in conjunction with two hundred Quanapaw Parkway? How, just want to make sure we're. Proceeding properly with how these two properties are adjacent.
They're, they're actually not. They're separated between, they're separated by, by one hundred Quanapaw, which is the new office building.
Oh, that, that's right, okay.
And these are separate filings. You know, the two hundred Quanapaw is own totally separate owner. Then this property. So this is, this is an independent filing.
Okay, so back to the original, how do you want to proceed with fifty Quanapaw Parkway as far as a preliminary subdivision?
Well, with all due respect, we, we look at this as a pretty straightforward subdivision.
Right.
Pretty simple. And it obviously meets all your rules and regulations. So, you know, we would request that you approve the preliminary subdivision plan. And again, you know, the significance of that, we talked about, it's, it's not a lot.
Right.
And you know, with, you know, obviously reserving your rights to, to, you know, make further comment and take further issue when the definitive plan is filed. When and if that is filed. So, you know, so we would, you know, and I think it's, it's very straightforward. So we would just respect, respectfully request approval of the preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay. Well, as a board, just a quick poll to the members. Be ready to vote on this plan this evening?
I'm not in, in just, Mr. Chairman, in the past, we have, not that it's, this is a public hearing, but. We have let, or we have taken comments from the public. So if someone does have some constructive criticism. We have welcomed it in the past, so I suggest that. You know, we let people comment on, on the subdivision that's before them, or the proposed subdivision that's before them. If they have anything constructive to say. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're discussing what's before us here, not what's been before us in the past or what could be in the future. It's, we're discussing what we have presented to us right now.
Okay, with that request by Matthew Lowery, we could open it up to the public for questions that are only concerning fifty Quanapaw Parkway, the preliminary subdivision plan, not buildings that would be on it, not what the future would be, because this is what the definitive subdivision plan will be. If you have any questions or comments from the public, please raise your hand and state your name and address. Thank you. See, Brown Delavope, if you'd like to unmute and speak, please.
Hi, Brown Delavope, it's Iris Street. Yeah, just maybe a technical question is, I know this is just preliminary, but how does one know how to subdivide if you don't know what's going there? How does that work?
Attorney McGrail, would you like to answer that?
I'd be happy to answer Mr. Delavope's question. I mean, it's very common that a subdivision just deals with land, not with buildings. So very often, when this board has subdivisions that relate to residential use, you would never know what type of home is going to be built. This is just a subdivision of limited business land, so as long as the lots, when they're built upon, meet the zoning, the uses meet the zoning, the dimensional requirements are met. And it's allowed under the zoning bylaw, anything that will be allowed under the zoning bylaw, either by right, a special permit could be built and used on those lots.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the public concerning fifty Quanapaw Parkway? I see Robert's iPad hand is raised, if you can unmute and speak, Mr. Mitchell?
Robert Mitchell, six Balding Street. Just one question, just out of curiosity, going. How do you describe it? Does a hundred foot buffer zone, it's sort of off, see where the legend is on the map? It kind of goes up and down on the screen, adjacent to, a little more to the right. More to the right, more to the right, right there. Whoop, just a little bit to the left, sorry. That one. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, hundred foot buffers on, I'm just wondering what that's a buffer from, because the lake is obviously way down low. Is that, I'm not that knowledgeable on this, is, is it a buffer zone off of vegetated wetland? Or is it a property buffer? Or, or is because there, is there a swell perhaps going through there? That's my only question, thank you.
John, you can answer that better than me.
Yes.
If you could.
Mr. Ogrin, if you could answer that.
Um, yeah, I don't know why it's relevant, because it's not on this property, but. It has to deal with the drainage swale that runs between the two properties.
I got it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, thank you, Mr. Ogrin. I don't see any other hands up. If there's anybody that can't put their hands up, their blue hand up in the participation. If you do have a question, if you can unmute and speak at this time. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the planning board regarding fifty Quanapaw Parkway? So why, with the information we have this evening and understanding the wetlands, the dredge. Water quality, we don't know anything about the building types yet. And some questions, I think, I'm not sure how much more we will get out of this plan, as far as understanding, I know, looking at the cul-de-sac and the setbacks, and there's no special waivers for frontage, all the frontage is met. There's no other comments I have regarding this plan. I'd like to go to the planning board to see if there's any other comments.
I've got nothing else at this point.
Bill or Megan? Well, after hearing comments from the public, is it something that we, as a board, are looking at accepting this evening in a vote? So they can move on to the definitive plan?
I would, I would, you know, push this off till our next meeting to make sure other people, after seeing this, may have some questions that come up, there's, there's no rush on it at this point. So I don't see a need to vote on it tonight.
Right, sorry if I'm making it feel like it's rushed. I am a little concerned, and maybe we should have spoke about this before, about the rest of our meeting schedule for, between now and the second week in, in December. I know something I was going to bring up under items not anticipated. But we have, I think this is maybe our fifth week in a row meeting, and we did set the seventeenth. Which is next Tuesday, as to continue our public hearing for the Friends of Lake Quanapaw articles. We'll also have some other items on that agenda. I was going to suggest, to propose that we do not meet the week of Thanksgiving, which is our scheduled, the fourth Tuesday. And one reason why is, I believe, and Susan, if you could correct me, is Town Hall open? On that Tuesday? It is open, okay. I know it's a short week, I might not be able to make that meeting. And I want to propose to see if we can set our meeting date to the seventh, which, sorry, on the seventeenth, but that would be our final meeting in November. Does anybody from the board have any comments or thoughts about that?
That's fine with me. I mean, we, we don't need to act on this.
That's good for me.
December.
Right. And looking in, Megan, I'm sorry, are you all set?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. And if we look at into December, we have the same thing we run into every December. It would push us to the eighth and the twenty second for our meetings. I think with the amount of projects that are coming up and the public hearings open and everything else, as a board, since we do not need a room to meet and I was going to propose, I, I'd like to propose that we meet on the first and the fifteenth, instead of the eighth and the twenty second. I believe as a board with everything that's going on in the town, it's important for us to get the two meetings in, in December. Does anybody from the board have any comments or questions regarding that?
I would need to check my schedule, because I, I have other. You know, meetings that I need to attend, so I couldn't comment on, I can't say right now.
Okay. Bill and Megan?
Be okay for me.
Okay.
Either option works for me for the month of December.
Right.
Well, until we hear from Matt, let's hold it to the eighth and the twenty second for December. And talk between now and our next meeting to figure out if we shift it to the first and the fifteenth. Does anybody have any other options for December that they'd like to explore for meetings? Again, my reason is I'd like to have more than one meeting in December.
So are you saying you can't make the twenty second?
I can definitely make the twenty second. Things usually get tight two days before Christmas and other holidays that fall within that time. And I'm thinking about the public being able to make it as well. So until we make a decision at the seventeenth meeting, let's keep it to the eighth and the twenty second. And if there's a correction, we'll do that at the seventeenth. Does that sound like a good plan moving forward?
Yes, to me.
Okay. And while we're looking at dates, is there any reason we can't meet the twelfth and the twenty sixth of January? Those are the proposed, those are our usual dates, twelfth and twenty sixth.
With, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, that, that's like five years from now, so.
I understand, and if anybody has any conflicts with what's coming up with our new economic developer onboard, with envisioning Wakefield coming back onboard, I want to make sure we have, there's another project coming up too. That will be on the agenda probably for next meeting as well. That we need to discuss, that could also become a public hearing. That will be on the agenda probably for next meeting as well, that we need to discuss, that could also become a public hearing. But we'll wait and see. All right, that's too far away, 2021. It does sound really far away. Okay. The planning board, I'm trying to plan. Come on.
I, I can barely get through each, each week, so I'm not, I'm not sure yet, so.
Thank you, Matt, for your communication. I know it's been busy. All right. Mr. Obergren, if you could stop sharing the screen here, and let's move on to item number four.
If I could just ask, where, where do you want to, where do you want to put this? Do you want to put this for the seventeenth?
I'm sorry, yes, I'd like to put it for the seventeenth.
For the seventeenth, okay. Then, you know, you, you still have time. Because as I said, I, I believe it was the twenty-eighth, and forty-five days from the twenty-eighth is December fourteenth. So if you don't have, you know, if it doesn't work out on the seventeenth, you could just, then you could push it to where, whatever date that's going to be in December, the first of the eighth.
Okay.
So I do think, I, as Matt said, I do think you have time and room, but I, I, I think we don't know when the meeting's going to be on, 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 in December yet. It might be good just to, we would request you put it on the seventeenth as at least a placeholder.
I'd like to have it on the seventeenth as a placeholder, yes.
Okay.
And that agenda is going out tomorrow.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Attorney McGrail. So we'll have it on the agenda. We'll have the preliminary subdivision plan for 50 Quinapowett Parkway will continue for the next meeting Tuesday, November, I almost said December seventeenth, my daughter's birthday. Let's go ahead and jump to item number four.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, do we have any ways of actually posting these plans so people can look at them and have comment? I know in the past, we have put things on our, on our website. I don't know what the procedure is now. But, you know, just to be fully open with everyone, I'd, I'd rather have these out in the public so people can, can look at them.
That's a really good suggestion. I know that's something we have done with some plans. Do we do it with the preliminary plans, or when they get to definitive?
I think it would be up to us if we want to put it on there, you know, being openly open and transparent. I don't see an issue with it, so.
I don't either.
Public record, so.
So we should be able to post these PDFs in Susan.
We sent PDFs in. You have PDFs of these plans.
We do. And what we can do is, I'll speak with Susan after this meeting tonight, as we're reviewing the minutes and tomorrow, the agenda for tomorrow. And we'll find a method to speak with Jen McDonald tomorrow about how the PDFs are uploaded to this proposed new subdivisions. I think, I think we need to get rid of proposed new subdivisions and just have it plans for review by planning board or something here, under one category. Okay. Good suggestion, Matt. Thanks. Item number four, preliminary subdivision plan for 200 Quinapowett Parkway. And Attorney McGrail, is this also you?
It is.
Yeah.
John, if you want to share.
So for the record on this, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing Waterstone, the owners, the owner of the property and the applicant for the preliminary plan. Obviously, I can repeat myself on the procedure. It's also applicable to this plan. Let me see who I have here with me tonight. So Tim Williams is from Allen and Major, is, is the site civil engineer on this property. And also with me tonight is, I believe, Peter, are you here? Yeah, Peter Tam, who is, is, is co-counsel on this. And I think that's who you're going to be hearing from on this, potentially.
Okay.
So, Tim, I guess you can get right through it, right to it, if you would, and, and talk about this preliminary subdivision plan.
Sure. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Tim Williams with Allen and Major Associates. And the intent is to subdivide 200 Quinapowett into three separate lots. Right now, the, the site contains twenty-four total acres. Lot number one would be fourteen acres. Lot number two would be three point four acres, and lot three would be five point nine nine acres, and the subdivision road and the right-of-way itself would be a half an acre. So, let me go back to this plan right here. The, the site is encumbered by a number of resource areas, including wetlands. And you can see those, those have been recently delineated, and are part of a notice of intent for the prior developers' development program back in 2019. So those wetland resource areas are still active. The proposed lots of the three lots, they, they all meet the zoning requirements for lot area and required frontage. So the intent is to create a two hundred and eighty-six linear foot subdivision road off Quinapowett Parkway, and essentially what is the, um, the driveway easement, and the subdivision road would, again, would tie back into that easement area that allows vehicles to pass and repass through 200 Quinapowett. The road itself, it's a sixty-foot wide right-of-way with two fifteen-foot wide travel lanes for a total paved surface of thirty feet. We've got a six-inch curving, a granite curving, six-inch grass tree landscape area, five-foot sidewalk, and then another three and a half feet on the backside of the sidewalk. So the sidewalk encompasses the whole subdivision road. We did propose utilities, both sewer, gas, water, and electric, and all those tie back into the existing municipal system that's found in, either on Quinapowett Parkway or within the 200 Quinapowett site itself. The drainage will be advanced during the definitive process, based on conversations I've had with the, the town engineering department. We need to advance our drainage design, and again, that will be part of the full subdivision submission package. So it's pretty straightforward. We're just putting a subdivision road on what is currently paved surface. It's the parking lot for 200 Quinapowett. And, and that's really it in a nutshell. It's, again, pretty straightforward. All the work proposed is within paved surfaces. So we will not be encroaching any further into the wetland resource areas than, than it currently exists today. And again, anything we do out here as part of the definitive is just going to be a, an improvement to the stormwater over what currently exists out there today.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I know on an email chain that I was added to regarding Quinapowett Parkway, and whether it was a legal way and all that, that the town engineer also reviewed and brought to our attention. I know that's something that town council, Tom Mullen, reviewed and found it that, yes, there's no reason why it wouldn't be considered as a proper way for the subdivision plan. Just wanted to bring that part up. I know this also has easements as well, and there's the connection to 100 Quinapowett Parkway. Are there any provisions to upgrade that road? I know it's not part of this, of, of 200 Quinapower, but where it does start to turn out? Are there any requirements that you would need to, or have you talked to the current landowner about updating that road as well?
I understand through conversation with the current landowner, based on their permits that they acquired in, in mid-2019, they're in the process of making modifications to the existing travelway. Now, that's the last I heard, was about a month ago. Based on my discussions with the town engineer requesting the, the permit documents from 2019. So I'm, I, it's my understanding that they are making improvements out here. I, I just don't know where it stands.
All right, thank you. I'd like to open it up to the board to see if anybody has any questions or comments for Mr. Williams and Peter Tam.
My only question is, is the existing water service and sewer service able to handle any additional capacity out there?
Based on our preliminary discussions with the, with the town engineer, they are, they, there's some off-site water that this town's consultants are in the process of evaluating if any off-site improvements need to be done. There's ample sewer. It's, it's water, and it, it ties back into the relationship between Lynn Field and Lake Field, and whether any kind of off-site water needs to be upgraded for that, those discussions.
Bill or Megan? Any comments? Bill?
Yeah, I would like to know, they, I know these buildings are going to be pretty large. And what about fire pumps and everything? Is the water system going to handle fire pumps? And sprinkler systems in these buildings, or are they going to have to add to it, or?
I think when we get to that, that point in time where we come forward with, with the permitting documents for each of the development of the individual lots, that'll all be vetted out prior to that process.
All right, thank you.
Megan, any comments? I, I do have one additional comment, and I know this is something that will probably come up about the, the drainage into the lake, whatever might be running in. Is, and I know that's a little further down the road, but at, at this point, with the, with the current property owner, is, what's happening with any road salt, anything running from this property into the lake? Is that something that's being mitigated or managed?
Well, it will be.
Yeah, up on the screen is what's happening in the existing conditions right now, and you could see some of the resource areas that make the site somewhat challenging. Right now, it's all country drainage. There's no catch basins on the site. Everything is, she flows back to Lake Quinapowett. Under the, the current landowners program in mid-2019 that got approved, that was essentially the elimination of the generator pads, and, and the re-expansion of the parking lot into those generator pads. We had come forward with a full Conservation Commission notice of intent filing to mitigate the stormwater over what exists out there today, and we received a notice of order conditions. So it's, it'll just be handled with water quality swales. The groundwater is very high. It, you have to have, you have to be creative with the stormwater management out there, which we did, again, with the filing that we did in 2019. We, we need to do the exact same thing with this subdivision plan. And anything else that gets developed on this site needs to account for the lack of drainage, the lack of separation from groundwater. So it would be creative. It'd be bio-retention areas and low-impact development strategies.
Tim, would it be better than what's there now?
Yes, anything would be better than nothing.
Right.
And we're aware that, that the site does flood periodically, especially around the bends of the drive. So that, all that will be managed on future submissions.
Yeah, thank you for your answer. I know it's a long way to go with it, but it's good to start to understand that you've gone in that direction. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to, anybody from the planning board have any comments? Okay. At this time, I'd like to see if anybody from the public has any comments for 200 Quinapowett, preliminary subdivision for 200 Quinapowett Parkway. And I see, Mr. Mitchell, you have a hand up. If you can go ahead and unmute and name an address.
Hi, Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding Street. Just, just one question, sort of a, what, what the two planning board members had gone to run utilities. I know, Tim, I think it was, had mentioned gas. I was just curious where you are on gas, because I believe MGLD has some restrictions on new gas lines. This is pretty common in, in the industry. Just wondering if there's any conversation on that. That's all. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have met with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department on, on on prior submissions. They've indicated that there's no issue with us tying any kind of future development into the gas mains out here, or the electrical services. They would like to be a, play part of, of the design at the end of the day, but all indications are that there's, there are no issues.
Okay, thank you. Kind of a new update.
I have a question. Have they run extra capacity up there? There looks like there are two gas lines in Quinapowett Parkway, so did, did they run out of the line for the generators at some point?
That's a good question. You know, the, the existing site itself is, is peppered with underground electric, underground gas, underground telecommunications. So any future development is going to have to, we're going to have to untangle that web of utilities that are out there.
Yeah, the, the digital use brought in a lot of that stuff, Matt, to support what they were doing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else from the public? If you cannot raise your blue hand, and you can unmute and speak, if you'd like. Okay, thank you. Just in with a preliminary subdivision plan for 200 Quinapower to take the same path as 50 Quinapowett Parkway, and we'll look at it at the November seventeenth meeting to, to review and to see if there are any other public comments.
I, I, one quick thing. So obviously with as much wetlands is surrounding this site and adjacent to the other sites, the Conservation Commission is going to have a major role in whatever goes on out there. Is that, would that be a correct statement?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that would be correct. Similar to what we did when we worked with the current landowner, as far as removal of generators, we had to go in front of the Conservation Commission. Because the site is so encumbered with well and resource areas, anything we did would, we would need to order conditions to perform.
All right, so we're going to have potentially multiple boards looking at all of these plans as they go forward.
Yes, that's correct.
And you already have an open dialogue with the town engineer.
Yes, I do.
I know as we move forward, definitive plan-wise, to understand how this building is being removed from the site and everything else that goes along with that, so. Looking forward to all that. Any other comments from the board? And when you look at the site and you see the cars and the parking spots, it just gives you a whole sense of scale, how large this site is. All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Tam, is there anything that you have that you'd like to share, or are you all set?
Mr. Chairman, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all set. I, I think, I appreciate the board's time. As, as Brian mentioned, this is only a preliminary plan. There's no requirement that we in fact submitted, so we appreciate your comments. And in terms of additional feedback, your approval of this plan or approval with suggested modifications doesn't have any precedential bearing on the filing of a definitive. And frankly, if you disapprove it, it doesn't preclude us from, from filing a definitive, so. I appreciate you being deliberate about it. I don't want you to have to waste any more time than you need to on it. It meets the subdivision rules and regulations, and we do feel that if the board is inclined, they can approve it.
Thank you.
But we're in no, no hurry, so we can.
All right. And similar to our discussion for 50 Quinapowett Parkway, it's best that we do allow the public to have another chance at speaking. And we're looking at setting that date for the seventeenth on our agenda. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Item number five, preliminary subdivision plan for 591, 595, 599, and 607 Northern, North Avenue.
I'm back up on this, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicants on this, and owners on this matter. John Obergren is back up. Attorney Brian McGrath representing the applicants on this and owners on this matter. John O'Grady is back up on this, so. I think, you know, for, for me, already, this is the Lakeside Office Park and Hotel property that we're dealing with.
And just, I, I know this, a few people here on the west side, I've received a couple of text messages and emails. I saw that plan is, my, I have my office in that space. Should I be considering a new place? And I had to reassure them that, no, this is, this is, this would be a long time in the making, and I, so if you, anybody on the planning board does receive any comments from friends or other people that do have offices at Lakeside, and I know this, have them tune in so they can learn of what's going on. That, that was more of my suggestion. But I wanted to reassure them that their office was not going away anytime soon. Go ahead, Mr. McGrath. Attorney McGrath.
I'm gonna hand it over to John if I can.
If you wanna share, can you share?
He's got more important stuff to say than I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, John O'Grady, Hays Engineering. This property is located on, essentially on North Ave. It consists of just under 16 acres. So we have North Ave kind of on the, to the west, Quanipower to northwest. This does border on Lake Quanipower itself, and then kind of to the south is Willard Road. You know, as far as the geography, generally, North Ave and Quanipawett Parkway and slightly higher, and it all essentially slopes down towards, towards the lake. You know, the existing site is, consists of several buildings, parking areas, and driveways connecting those parking areas. What we're proposing 497 foot length roadway. Essentially is overlaid in an area where there's a street called Babbitt Street, that kind street is essentially in an area where there is a driveway, but it's not built to a street standards as far as curving and sidewalk, so. Overlapping, we're proposing a 50-foot layout. Babbitt Street is only a 40-foot layout. We're showing it terminating at, with a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac. On this one, we're proposing, again, 26 feet of pavement, vertical granite curbing, sidewalks along both sides that would connect sidewalks out on North Ave. Sewer and water would connect to existing utility, town utilities out in North Ave. Drainage. They said this area is pretty much paved, you know, there are some landscaped areas, but fairly minimal. So this, as I said, this slopes down from North Ave to Quanipawett Parkway. There's not a lot of grade difference here. So in this one, we're proposing the street to drain out, shed down through a grass well and into a proposed rain garden, and then eventually it would discharge that runoff out towards the lake, which is essentially what it does now. It pretty much runs along the surface and then goes out. Pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Are there any underground culverts that come across North Ave into this space from the other side of North Ave?
There is a, um.
Down near Willard?
Willard, I know there's, there is a culvert that's on, I know of it, I know of it on the opposite side of North Ave. I think it's in, it's in the general area of Willard Road, and it may connect to North Ave Drainage and, and continue down Willard Road.
Right, I know that was, that was in a previous project in front of the board for some zoning bylaw changes, and I was just curious of how that interacted with this property, if it was something that also needed to be reviewed.
Yeah, I don't believe it goes, it crosses this property.
Okay.
I can, I can bring that up if you're interested, Mr. Chair.
Well, if it doesn't go through this property, then I'm not concerned about it, but if, if it does go through, it's something that should be shown on the plan.
Yeah, I'm happy to bring it up, just to.
Please do.
Yeah, because that might help everybody. John, can I have the screen, please? There you go. So this is, I think this is the area that you're talking about, Mr. Chair. Can you see my screen yet?
Sorry, I muted myself. Yes, this is the area, and yes, I can see your screen.
Yeah, yeah. So I think this is, I think it goes down Willard, but it comes out here at some point. You know, John, you can locate that, right?
Yeah, actually, if, if you wanna give it back to me, I can.
I mean, this is, this is a, this is a pretty big watershed, and, and this was the property at the June Town Meeting that we were trying to do something to actually, to, to give, to, to gift this piece of, entire piece of land to the town, but it didn't pass Town Meeting. Right. Element that would have occurred, but, but you, you, you remember correctly. I think it's in this area somewhere, Mr. Chair, that that, that some type of culvert comes up. John, I'll give it back to you.
Ground, and it seems to dump out after the cul-de-sac at the end of Willard Road to that little sandy embankment that I don't know the correct name for, where the concrete triangle happens. A good fishing spot.
John, here you go. Back to you.
Right. Okay, that's, that's all I have on. I, I, I did bring up the comment before. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. O'Grady.
Yeah, I, I think I can clarify a little more. I just had to, had to look at the plan a little closer. I think what you're talking about is over on this side, there's a head wall.
Yes.
And that connects to, we actually show this on here. There is a drain manhole, and then there's another, the drain line that runs down along the side, basically under the sidewalk on North Ave, connects to another drain manhole, and drain manhole, and all, all this is down, all this is located within the right of way of either North Ave or Willard Road, and then you said it, it discharges out towards Quanipower in this little concrete area.
You know, I wanna learn more about that concrete area with all the sand and everything. It's really interesting. I imagine it's some type of filter for the water. And the, the only other thing I brought up before, I think it came up, is that there's two different the single residence line that goes right through the limited business on that part of the property. Is that a concern at all?
No.
No? Okay, just moving forward, just if it's something that we need to discuss and bring up, and it does become an issue for having the two zoning districts back to back, but still inside the property where it goes through the subdivided lots.
Yeah, we would just have to, you know, when we, that would be more of an issue if anything was developed on these lots, and we would have to recognize and deal with that line.
Okay.
But not for subdivision purposes.
Thank you. Planning Board, any comments? Matt?
I've got nothing at this point.
Okay. Phil? Megan, any comments, questions?
Not at this time.
Alright, thanks. And I'd like to see at this point if there's anybody from the town, the public that has any comments, and please state your name, and if you raise your hand, I see Mr. Mitchell has his hand raised. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell, if you want to unmute.
Yep, hi, Bob Mitchell, Six Balding. Yeah, that, just historically, that culvert's also been known as Sagus River West. I don't know if you ever heard that term before, as opposed to Sagus River East over at, you know, Line, Old Line Island. But, and I think Met Caffinetti may have built that berm. I'm not a pro on this, but it might have been called a berm. I know the town does try to clean that up, and it might be on future work for the Concom and so forth. Just one question right around that berm area. I noticed there's, it's, I, I'm just asking if, if you can, if there's clarification on where the town-owned land ends and where the town easement ends. It's a little unclear to me. Does it end basically right all near that berm, or is there any extension?
Attorney McGrath?
John, can you blow up the, can you blow up the plan for Mr. Mitchell? So we can all see what, what Bob's referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the berm. That, that U thing, I think, is like the berm, basically. I'll call it a berm for want, that sand pit. But I mentioned there's an easement in there, and some town-owned lands, I was just curious on that, how that all melds together.
Yeah, we're, this is essentially the extent of that easement to the town of Wakefield.
Okay.
Basically this area and, yeah.
But the town, and then the town owns up through that sort of a backwards C.
John, can you go, go move the plan up, because I think what, what Bob's referring to is further down towards.
Yeah. This has a parcel ID.
Yeah, I see the parcel ID, John.
Yeah.
In here?
No, no, further down. Keep coming down, down the bottom of the screen. Right in there, right, Bob?
Yeah, I was just curious where that delineates. Because it's kind of a, that backwards C thing, I'm, I'm assuming that's the sand pit.
It is.
Bob, you're wondering what that, what that piece of land is, right? I mean, that's like.
Yeah, where does it?
Meaning, I think the original question was, where does the town land stop?
Yeah.
I think that's a lot, John. Is that a lot of land at the time?
Yeah, this is a, this is a lot. It's not, it's not part of our property. And, you know, obviously you have Willard Road. You know, where the Willard Road stops here, then I'd have to look into a little further.
Okay.
Well, doesn't it read parcel 10, Town of Wakefield? Is that the? I could read that.
Yeah, I think it's a.
2A39, something 4B.
Yeah, parcel 10?
Yeah.
Okay. We're showing it, we're showing it as an abutting parcel, basically.
I'm gonna show you right now. Hold on. I can, I can think.
I mean, I basically know the town owns up to like Quanipawett Yacht Club around in that area. They have some parcels. I was just wondering where it actually, it was unclear from the map.
Bob, I, I think this is it, Bob. You see my cursor?
Yep.
See that little piece?
Okay, got it.
If that helps.
Yeah, no, that's good. Nope.
So I think they, I think they own the land between like the cul-de-sac to get access to the lake.
Yeah, yeah, they own quite a bit up to the yacht club.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know who owns this. I think it's a house.
Yeah. Yeah, the white house there. Yeah.
Yeah, the house there. I think the town piece that this references right there.
Nice white colonial. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let me bring up the participants again. Any other? There you go. Any other comments from the town, from the public? If, if you can't raise your hand, you can unmute and go ahead and speak if you'd like.
Hi, this is Chris Hickey from just down the street, 9 Linda Road. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, thanks for the, the sharing tonight. Curious, is, is the, the hotel part of this plan, or how, how does that fit into the, the plan here?
It is, Chris.
It is, is the intent to knock it down to do something different, or could we get a little later?
Yeah, there's no intent, this only, we're only looking to do is subdivide the land at this point. So what, what the end use of the land would be is not determined at this point, Chris.
Okay.
If anything, you, you might see it stay the way it is.
So we're opening up possibilities for improving the landscape, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. I don't see any other hands up. Any other comments from the board? Okay, let's see. Matt?
No, I've got none. Again, I think we should, you know, carry this over till our next meeting.
Right.
Allow more public comment.
Same thing, we'll put this on the agenda for November 17th. That way the public has another chance to review, and if there are any comments that help us understand more about the project, that'd be great. So thank you for your time tonight on these. I know there's a lot to review and a lot of information. Thank you, Attorney McGrath, for explaining all the information upfront, so we understand. And looking forward to our next meeting and hearing more from the public. If you, Attorney McGrath, are you sharing?
I am, sorry about that.
No problem. Next item on tonight's agenda. Item number six, reviews ZBA's ruling on cherry lane variance. And I'd like to see if, Mr. Lou, and I just wanna make sure, Mr. Lou, is, is your first name pronounced Ni?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to our planning board. Nice to see you. And thank you, by the way, first of all, to, for sending all of the pre-documents, especially the letter that really explains the situation you're in, the history behind it, everything that's happened in between, including some mistakes that were made. And I know we also spoke to Mr. Hatfield of the ZBA, and I know the planning board also had some information about the zoning board, their ruling, and also the recorded meetings. I have to say, one thing that I really like about this is now being able to go back and watch the recordings. There were three different meeting recordings that we were able to go back and review, and it, it's helped so much, so I just as, you know, side note for the board, I'm in favor after this COVID thing is long gone to still keep recording these meetings somehow. It, it's just, it helps my, my mind go back. So with that, Mr. Lou, if you'd like to, I, I wanna say, so you can see the boards here, Matt Lowery is our Vice Chair. Bill, be more, sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we go too much further, I just, I wanna state that I'm gonna recuse myself from participating in this portion, in this item. I have and currently work with some of the people that are involved with this, so I feel best if I just recuse myself and deliberations on this.
Thank you, Matt. That's where I was going with that, so I appreciate you letting me know. Okay. So, Bill Demorey and Megan Minasali, so our, we're missing one board member this evening. But I know our goal this evening is to not so much go through all the history and everything if we don't have to, because we did get a chance to read it. But as a board, this is pretty exciting because I didn't realize that, and as you know, that this hasn't come in front of our ZBA in the last 15 or 20 years from the members that are on our, our ZBA. For when a variance is approved but then rescinded, that applicant has to wait two years before they can reapply for the variance. No matter what it is, they have to wait two years. So I think it's, it's a great way in learning from town council that in front of our board with your presentation this evening, our board can decide on whether you can go before the ZBA and apply for a zoning variance before that two years is up. So I just wanna say before you get to speak and present that I'm very interested in how this is gonna work and play out. I know with our board, there, there's some things that did happen during this, and hopefully everybody on the board got a chance to review it. But I know, just to state some things that did happen with the engineered drawings that were stamped and signed to the ZBA. I know there was some discrepancies on what was done. I know there was a plan that was once submitted to the ZBA with. there was a plan that was once submitted to the ZBA with an engineer stamp on it, a surveyor stamp on it and signed. And that same plan, even though the dimensions weren't changed, it was zoomed in and prepared for the zoning board with an additional zoning map and a couple of other notes on it that the surveyor did not provide or prepare or stamp or sign. And the date was also changed. So I know that's something you've already owned up to and we understand that's not the correct way to do it. I know as a professional architect with my own stamp, that that's something that would just be like, nope, can't do that. So I know I, I'd like to give you the chance now to share what you'd like with us so we can have a discussion and make a decision.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your time. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so yeah, I, I take full responsibility for, you know, skipping a process step and, and I should have gone back to the surveyor just to have him, you know, look over the drawing that I zoomed in on and and then just have him, you know, do a final review and stamp and go back. But, you know, I, I, I was under a lot of pressure. And, and I, you know, didn't think anything of it, to be honest with you. And I, I just wanted to keep the process moving and and, yeah, it was, it's been a tough tough now almost two years. And I had lost my job in January of this year and and I thought I would be able to take advantage of the time off to try to work on the project. But ultimately that didn't work out, so. So, yeah, and, you know, it's it was just a you know, the choice on my part that I, I made and, you know, I understand now that it, it carried a lot more weight than, than I thought it would. All things considered. And, you know, it's, it's a learning experience for me and yeah. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. That's good. I think one point that came up too, where the Conservation Commission was very involved and did approve the plans that you had before they went to the ZBA. And I know that's something that we even have at a recent I received also a letter of recommendation of your good standing and effort from the realtor, Mr. Barrett. He sent me a separate email as well. So, and I know if this is something that Bill and Megan, if you have any comments that are questions for Mr. Lou, that would be great to hear. I, I know I don't, I, I guess before we get there, because this is something brand new for our planning board. I, I talked to Mr. Mullen. And I, I know this is something that he hasn't had to to ratify or work with at all before either. So there, there is there is a way for us this evening, and again, just to remind Bill and Megan, that we can vote to allow Mr. Lou to resubmit, reapply to the ZBA for the zoning variances that he's looking for. So I just wanted to see if Megan or Bill, if you had any questions for Mr. Lou.
I had a question in regards to the change in the number or request for variances. So it went from three to one and why that's the case or why not the need for the other two variances anymore?
Yep. So originally I had asked for one variance to reduce the set, the front setback. So it would move the house closer to the street and further away from the natural resource to stream. And I thought that, you know, once again, it would create a bigger buffer between the house and the stream. And it would be something that is more beneficial for the stream and deserve the wetlands between the house and the stream. And I thought that would be something that conservation would, would look positively upon. And the second variance was that, since it has a relatively high water table, I, during the conservation review process, I made a lot of concessions and I felt that if we didn't do a basement, it would be less impactful on the land. And if we went with a concrete slab with frost walls and footings, you know, the house would just sit on the slab and and do three stories. So I was requesting three stories. But now, you know, after all this, I, I really just wanted to streamline the process and, and, and remove the, the front setback reduction and, and I'm just gonna, since I'm designing the house myself, I'm just gonna do a shallow basement and, and just leave it at two stories. And, and then still stay within the thirty-five foot height limit for a, a normal house. And, and then once again, just ask for one variance to allow me to build within fifty feet of the stream. Does that make sense?
It makes sense in regards to the, the second one, the concrete slab three stories. Just if you can clarify what the change was in regards for the setback, like I'm assuming the stream didn't go away, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the initial, I, I, even when I initially went to the ZBA, I could have just not even asked for that variance and, and leave the front setback as, as normal and the, the Conservation Commission would have been okay with it. I would have to have asked for variance, but I thought that, you know, once again, I, I was just, it was drilled in my mind to, to, to be nice to the land. And, and I thought that, you know, this would allow me to stay in that theme, right? And, but it caused me so much headaches. I, I, yeah, so I, for this second round, I just wanted to simplify the process, just go for the single variance to allow me to continue with my projects. And, you know, just try not, try to keep it simple.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Bill, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Lou?
I don't have really have any comments or questions, but I think that he made some bad choices there and I think that I would vote yes on this because of the choices he made, bad choice and I don't think it should be rewarded. That's how I feel on this.
Just to clarify.
Just saying, just saying that, you know, what's going on.
So I'm sorry, Bill, just to be clear, you, you, you vote, we haven't talked about a motion or.
I know we're not voting. I know we're not voting yet. I know. I just don't have any comments to really.
Okay, but is it just to make sure it, your, your, your idea is that with what Mr. Lou has done, that he needs to wait the two years? Or he doesn't need to wait the two years and as a planning board, we will allow him to go back to the ZBA for variance before the two years?
Yes, I, I just don't think we should.
Okay, thank you. And another comment too. I know I had a few different things to ask. I, I just wanted to know what, Lou, what would be your course of action? And, and obviously the variances really don't concern our board as much as how you proceed to move forward. For example, are you planning on resubmitting and working with the same surveyor? Are you looking at a new surveyor and engineer drawings with a whole different person that's also going to be there to present? Like what is your path moving forward for the ZBA to reapply for variance?
So I, I have secured a new surveyor and, and I already have a new plan and and, you know, just going back in and submitting with that new plan with no reduction in front setback, no, you know, it's it's, it's pretty much just a very similar plan, asking for that one single variance of being able to build within fifty feet of a, the stream.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And so I don't want to assume this, but if, if our ruling this evening is that you can go back to the ZBA for variance before the two years, you're ready to actually apply now.
Right, I would have to go through the process. You know, fill out the application, submit the paperwork, get on their schedule. You know, go through their schedule and then whatever ruling, you know, if, if it was positive, then I'd have to wait through the whole waiting period. And realistically, I probably wouldn't be able to start anything until next year. Probably due to the weather and, you know, just the ground frost and, yeah, so. So, yeah, so realistically, I probably wouldn't be able to start anything until next year.
Okay, if, one more question. I did, on my way home this evening, I did bike by to see the property. There's, there's chain link fences, like just post stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So initially, yeah, so initially that was gonna be like, kind of like a, a safe defense for any type of work to be done. You know what I'm saying? Generally around any type of construction, you want it to keep it a, a safe, safe area because there's kids in that area and and I had put that up just thinking that we would want to, you know, keep it safe for the kids so they don't explore while we're doing work there.
Alright. Thanks. Megan and Bill, any other questions or comments?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Alright, well, I'd entertain a motion to, for us as a board to make a decision for Zero Cherry Lane and the right for Mr. Lou to reapply to the zoning Board of Appeals for variance before the two-year wait. And I said it in that way, so either Bill or Megan, you could just say so moved.
So moved.
Do you have a second? So that would, second, Bill. Okay, thanks. All in favor in, for this motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, okay. Let the record show that there's two, four and one against. And with that, from my understanding, that Mr. Lou, this will allow you, since the majority voted of our planning board with Mr. Lowery recusing himself, that the majority, and this was something interesting too, I know there has to be a certain number and if there's three, it has to be two. If there was four members, it would have to be three. Out of there, that was just written into how it needs to be done. But with this, it passes. So you, you do have the ability to apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for variance. And with your path that you suggested, we're working with a new engineer, I would really suggest that you have that engineer at the ZBA hearings as well. And after watching, I, I really, I have to say, I was, it was tough to watch and I, I wish you the best luck with moving forward.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration and I, I will take your recommendations.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item number seven, items not anticipated by the chair. Well, I'd like to go first on this one, just for a quick one. We talked about the meeting minutes. I'm sorry, the meeting dates moving forward. So at the end of our public hearing for the Friends of Lake Quanapawat articles, we decided for November seventeenth to be our next meeting date for that hearing, which I think works much better considering the next week is Thanksgiving. And I know people aren't probably not a normal Thanksgiving for anybody, but at least that will hopefully allow more public to attend. We will not have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday in November, but we are planning on having our normal second and fourth Tuesdays in December at this point. Everybody cool with that? Megan, good. Bill, Matt, yep. Okay. The, I just wanted to do a quick recap for town meeting. I'm not going to recap all the articles, but, or the warrant, but it was, it was really nice. I stayed outside in the tent. I, the microphone was not working. I did have to run inside for our planning board to recommend favorable action for the bank and the paragraph L. And that did pass. So I don't know if anybody was there to pay attention, but that did pass. I'm looking at, I do want to recognize that Brown and Del Voppi does have her hand up. If, if you could hold on please. And I'm looking at, I have, oh, does anybody else have anything about town meeting? That was our only planning board action at town meeting. Okay. I did go and do a site visit, a site walk. You all approved for me to go and visit one oh seven Prospect. And I just wanted to share my screen. So I did go out that next day for lunch and met with Mr. Cullen, both Collins. We're on the side. It was a little rainy day, but it was perfect walking through. It was nice to see those rain gardens. But these three or four trees are against the very back of Prospect, very, very back. They, they, but the, the abut are here. She approached the contractor, Mr. Cullen, and asked if some trees could be removed. She was looking for a tree over here and these three trees to be taken down. And honestly, these trees are both healthy. This one and the one next to on the left. This tree right here is not healthy and is split and broken the limb. This other tree from Mr. Cullen's opinion was struck by lightning and you could actually see it split and burnt a little bit up in here. And this is the only branch that had leaves on it. So these are the two trees that will be coming down. The, they're outside the limit of work. They are right on that property line, maybe a couple of feet from the abutter. And these are the only true trees that are coming down. The other ones are all staying. So I just wanted to provide some closure on that. Does anybody on the board have any comments?
I appreciate the visuals. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, yeah. You're welcome. It, it is, it's good to see that, that that tree was struck by lightning and these are beautiful trees. And when we were looking at the plan and had the landscape architect go out and measure all the trees and make sure they were all saved and that the certain sized tree. Yeah, that's, things change in a season. Okay. Anybody else on the board have any comments that weren't anticipate, that they weren't anticipating? Nope. Before we do adjourn, Ms. Del Voppi, you have your hand up, I believe, if you want to unmute and speak.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Will, will those two trees be replaced?
No.
No.
No, no. In fact, the gutter, she is retired and her husband passed away two years ago and he took care of the land. And with the trees that were gone, she noticed her grass and flowers and everything bloomed like crazy this year. And she loved having the additional sun in her yard, which was very dark. which was very dark and moldy before, is what she said. So it was, it was a really nice meeting to be out there and meet with her and have her be very happy with what was going on.
Yeah, that's good. I just hate to see mature trees go. My other.
You did see the picture with one limb was gone, and there was only a little tiny limb, and the other one was struck by lightning and burned at the top.
Yeah, but I'm a tree person, so I understand if they're, if they're, if they're not safe, they should be taken down. But I did want to ask you, I know you, you guys have been handicapped for, for quite a number of years without a clerk. But I was wondering when you might be updating your planning board minutes, because the last minutes that are posted are from December of last year.
Understood. And that was a big task. We, as you know, the town planner retired. And I did go into his office and I was able to have access to his computer and compiled all the notes. The town was nice enough to lend me a laptop from the middle of August, and they asked for it to be returned last Thursday. So I did bring it down. But with that, we had access to the, all the different meeting notes and everything that was filed. And it wasn't that we didn't have meeting minutes from before. They just weren't posted to the website. And this has been an ongoing issue since I've been on the board. And I know Matt can attest to this, and as he brought up tonight, it would be great to have the plans up there that we're reviewing automatically posted. And Ms. Del Vopie, I'm not sure if you knew, but our clerk, we had another clerk from pretty much when we went to virtual meetings, we missed three meetings without a clerk.
Right, I, yeah, I'm aware.
We moved and we had another clerk lined up from the town. She actually moved back to California, so that didn't work out. And Susan Ald, who works for the town, was nice enough to, as a temporary bridge to help transition to the new Economic Developer Director position. And she's been here helping, I want to say since August and the, maybe the end of July to help compile them all. So what we did was we went back and captured all the notes we could. And we have from the recordings that are up on the site. We do have them now, I think, two meetings ago or a meeting ago, we approved.
Yes, I recall. Yes, yeah, a lot of them.
Yep, about six or seven meeting minutes worth. And now we were caught up. So those just need to be posted at this point. And Susan and I will be discussing that after this meeting is over.
Wonderful. I'm really glad to hear, because it, you know, it's, it really makes it easy just to go online and just pick a meeting and be able to, to tell, you know, if you weren't able to attend a meeting, be able to tell what what happened. So that would be great. And as well as any other information, like you said, plans and photos and whatnot is really great. And, and also on your, the other place for people to look for your meeting videos is the WCAT YouTube site. They post them all there as well. So it's easy to get to either way.
Right. And I think a lot of people that know how to search will be able to get to that. I know I like to go right to our Wakefield Planning Board site, so people can become more familiar with it. As we start to gain more access to that site and be able to post up meeting minutes as well as the PDFs of the upcoming projects, just really want to be keeping, pointing people to the site. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
No, I'll thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Yeah, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.